Okay. Just before we start, this is an open session, public meeting, and it is being videotaped. Your image and/or voice may be recorded. We're here, and I'll open the hearing for the.
I have a public hearing notice if you want to read the public hearing.
Okay. She keeps me on it. Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Berlin zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September 11th at 7:00 p.m. in the Berlin Town Office Building at 23 Linden Street regarding the request of Adelson and Rosanna Corias, is it Corias? For a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, and/or change a structure at 28 Oak Street in Berlin, Massachusetts. This structure is deemed pre-existing non-conforming under the Berlin zoning bylaw. The applicants seek relief under Article 11, Nonconforming Uses in Structures, Section 1130, Nonconforming Structures, and Section 1142, Changes Requiring a Special Permit of the Berlin Zoning Bylaw. The petitioners propose changes that will increase the structure's floor area, including the addition of a third floor. All persons interested should plan to attend or be represented at the hearing. Okay, I'll officially open the hearing. There's one, two, three, four, five of us at the table, which is a good thing. First, we'll give the petitioner an opportunity to present what they're proposing to do, explain how they believe they're nonconforming, and then the board will have an opportunity to ask questions, and then we'll open it up to the public. You run.
I'm sorry. Nonconforming is?
Pre-existing nonconforming.
So I am changing it to improve it?
Well, have you had an opportunity? It cited in the notice that you sent out that we have cited Article 11, the Nonconforming Uses in Structures. Have you had an opportunity to look at this?
No.
Okay. What we need from you is for you to address the items in Article 11 so that we can either authorize a special permit or deny a special permit. Let's start this way. Let's decide how your structure, existing structure, is pre-existing nonconforming. I know that the building commissioner cited the fact that it's more than 50 feet, or it's only 50 feet from the street. That's one thing.
It's supposed to be 50 feet.
It's supposed.
It's less than 50 feet.
Well, if it were constructed now, there's. Oh, I'm sorry. If it were constructed now, there may be a change because that's. There is a table of use in this book that tells you. Let's see if the folks can help me as to what page it's on. Right up front, it tells you what the front yard, what the side lot, what size the lot needs to be, and maybe that would be a good thing for us to go through. Okay, folks, on the page, let's see.
We're actually looking at page 55. So for residential?
Right. Article six is the density and dimensional regulation, so let's go through them. Residential agriculture, the minimum lot size is 80,000 square feet. Do you know how large the lot is that the structure is on?
Over 2,300, or under 2,200, sorry.
Okay, so the lot that that, so that is nonconforming, okay?
Lot size is under 2,300 square feet?
I believe so.
So you have just about a half an acre of land?
Just where the house is, yes.
So the particular lot that the property is on is 2,300 square feet, which is, does not meet the dimensional requirements.
15.
In residential agricultural. The minimum frontage is 200 feet. Does the lot have 200? Does the lot have 200 feet of frontage?
200 feet? No.
Do you know what the front?
On the front?
Thirty-three?
Probably 45.
Okay.
On the front.
That's not.
The lot width needs to be 100 feet. Is the lot 100 feet wide?
Wide, yes.
So it meets the 100 feet wide?
I think I sent a copy, and it shows you the lot and the sizes on each side.
Well, it's not spelled out on the one that I looked at, at least. Is this what you're talking about?
No.
Okay. Okay, so this is from the assessors. So number 28 is what? Is lot 41? So it's 128.6, 160.5, 163.4, and 100 feet. It doesn't, it's 18,700 square feet. Yeah. The front lot on Oak Street is 100 feet. Right? And then, it's 100 feet wide, so that's fine, and that would be like at the least. It's, in the back, it's 128, so that would be the least. So it meets this, okay. The house, the side lot, needs to be 20 feet. It's difficult to tell from this, but I would tend to think it's not 20 feet on either side. See here, this is the house here. And this is 100 feet. I would say it's.
Doesn't appear to be 20 feet.
Right. And we don't have anything to tell us otherwise, other than what came from the assessors' office. Okay? And it's, the rear yard is supposed to be 40 feet. I would tend to think they meet that. 50 feet? Here's the rear yard, please. It says 40 for residential agricultural. And the green area is 70 percent. I would think that that's okay. How tall is the building, and how tall do you expect it to be?
It's a second, it was purchased with a second floor, and we're adding a third floor.
Okay. When you add the third floor, how tall will the building be?
It would be an extra 10 feet with a roof deck.
There were some plans there, weren't there, guys?
It was a two-story, and you've built it already, and it's a three-story.
With the attic.
Yeah, but it's, we're interested in the total height, not just what the third floor will add. It's the total height of the building. I'll let you deal with that. Okay. Septic system. Was the Title V done on the septic system because it's really recently purchased, right? And how many bedrooms was the Title V, grant you?
Five.
Five bedrooms?
It was four?
I thought I read four.
It's only four.
Four, including the apartment?
Including the apartment?
Four. I saw four.
But the lot, I, I, I think you're right. A total of four bedrooms, okay? It's also pre-existing nonconforming because it is a two-family, is it not? Is that the classification?
Classified as multifamily?
I'm sorry?
Multifamily?
Well, it's multifamily, but it's, right now, it's two-family, okay?
I'm coming up with 30. It looks like 30 feet, my eyes aren't that good.
Mine might have a magnifying.
Do you have a bigger print?
I don't.
Yeah, I can't really.
All right. Could you bring it to the table, please? Right over here. Nice of you to not walk in front of the key.
Eight, 10 is the one.
Thank you. Now, according to the Board of Health, you have permission for four bedrooms, and that would be all of the bedrooms.
I spoke with Bill Brookings, I called him on the phone, and I told him to go with her. I went somewhere in Worcester, and I registered it as a five bedroom.
Okay, but I have a note here from Bill Brookings that says, this was in July 25th, proposed interior renovations, room layout show 11 rooms total, which is considered a five-bedroom dwelling by definition. Title V, septic file indicates four-bedroom septic system.
So until I could go, and I had to, I had to do something in Worcester to register it as a five-bedroom, and I did, and I sent it to the Board of Health.
No, no, you need registration, you need the Board of Health to say that your septic system, have they given you something that says you have a five-bedroom septic system?
They told me, yes, go and register it, and I did.
What did they ask you to register it? Could we say? Is there a representative of the Board of Health here?
Paul?
Yes, sir. Could you clarify for us? You want to take a look at this? Okay, let's step away from Title V for a moment. We'll come back to it. So that, on several levels, this is pre-existing nonconforming. That doesn't mean you can't do something with the property.
Take a picture and then blow it up? All right. Put it on.
It's black, girl.
Very.
38 foot nine.
Mine picks up and handle it. Did you get that?
Is it?
I got it on the back side, back elevation.
38 nine?
38 foot nine, that's the best I can read.
Okay, now that we're, with the exception, the Board of Health sort of decided what dimensions and so forth you don't make, and because you haven't reviewed Article 11, if you will, let me bore you. This zoning bylaw shall not apply to structure or use lawfully in existence or lawfully begun, or to a building a special permit issued before the first publication notice of the public hearing. In other words, it's just saying if you were doing what you were doing, had started it before this bylaw was passed. Nonconforming uses, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to change in nonconforming use in accordance with this section, only if it determines that such change. That's for a change in use. That's if you were going from residential agricultural to commercial or something like that. Nonconforming structures, and I believe this is where you lie. The Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a nonconforming structure in accordance with this section, only if it determines that such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. The following types of changes to nonconforming structures may be considered by the Board of Appeals. Reconstruction, extension, or structure change to the existing structure. Alteration to the existing structure to provide for a substantially different purpose, or for the same purpose in a substantially different manner, or to a substantially greater extent. Reconstruction after a catastrophe, and we can eliminate that because to the best of our knowledge, there's been no catastrophe. Allowed changes, nonconforming single and two-family residential structures may be reconstructed, extended, altered, or structurally changed upon a determination by the zoning enforcement officer that such proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the nonconforming nature of said structure. And the issuance of a building permit where applicable, change is requiring a special permit. In the event that the zoning enforcement officer determines that the nonconforming nature of such structure would be increased by the proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change, the Board of Appeals may, by special permit, allow such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. And then it goes into talk about abandonment of the use, et cetera. So what we're looking from you is for you to tell us why it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Are you increasing the footprint of the building?
As a side?
By the footprint, I mean the amount of land the building itself covers?
No.
The foundation? Okay, so the footprint?
Didn't you add a wall in the back?
The wall? Yes, we added the wall to support the vision that was there. There was three piers that were.
It was falling apart.
Yes.
So the inspector was there in the house. He saw all the footings, and he'd say this body very.
We're improving it.
It was not able to pass, so we removed all the, you know, the foot that was there and put a new wall.
Well, that's changing the footprint.
There was footing, holding.
Holding, that addition.
Changing the footprint.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. You're adding a wall, or two walls.
The wall was in the same direction of the, you know.
Yes.
Did you know?
I've been there.
Okay. So now, we changed the footprint, put a wall.
Correct.
So how many square feet do you think you've added to the footprint?
Not that it was the same.
We just, we just added a wall to where.
Well, how wide is the wall, a foot wide?
The addition was already out. We just enclosed it. How does that go? I don't know.
You don't have the footage, right?
Well, there was a space at least two feet at one end between the house and the back pot, correct?
I'm sorry, the, the back door, you're saying?
No, the back wall. There used to be about a two-foot space there. That appears to be all closed in.
Yeah.
Yes.
Close that.
So it goes the whole length?
So it goes the whole length out to about the end of the first floor. And they made it another, a basement from the bottom.
Right.
Well, that adds to the.
That adds, okay.
To the footprint. I'm just curious as to what the footprint was and what it is now.
I don't know if you can see it in the plans. They don't tell you the.
All right. How can I say this? You got your, you got your piers on.
Five by 15?
No, 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 it's about, it's about eight feet by, by 15 feet.
Eight by 15?
Yeah. You know, if you say after, you know, the piers was there, was it two feet?
Correct.
This way? So we, I know.
Yep, the piers were in further.
Yeah.
We went out further, yes, to put the wall in.
Put the wall.
Correct. It's about, sort of having a little bit of set of plans, it's got to be at least 10 by 24?
No. Why don't you approach the table and? While he's coming to the table?
Bill Brookings indicated to me that this was going to be a four-bedroom deep restriction based on the Title V, which the system was adequate for four bedrooms.
This is the wall.
Yes, this says a five-bedroom deep restriction, which I personally haven't seen before. I would have to double-check with Phil, but if he okayed this.
I think that would be an outstanding issue then as to whether.
When I spoke with Bill, I showed him the plans, and he said, you're going for 11 rooms, so that has to be a five. So you have to go to Worcester and whatever that deep registration thing is, change it to a five. And I said, and the same thing, he says, it looks like it's a four, a four-bedroom septic tank. We don't have any work, we don't have anything to tell you. It is, or this is.
That's part of the problem. We don't, no one has complete information on what this is. We don't, it's a 1,000 gallon tank.
Could I trouble you, would you care to go make a copy of that and then give it back to the petitioner so that you can discuss it with Mr. Brookings?
Paul, I have a quick question. Is it possible to determine the size of this tank?
With the Title V inspection, we can't, there's no way.
Right, because you can empty the tank and find out how many gallons come out.
I have the type of five thing here. It says it's 1,500.
1,500 gallon tank?
Yeah.
Why don't you give that to him also and have him, so when he talks to Mr. Brookings, we can understand what the situation is? I'm sorry?
Service system isn't big enough.
Well, that's up to the Board of Health to determine, and that's why we're asking him to make copies.
This is, we added this. This is the more, more footprint.
So it's all this piece in here that's been added?
Yes and no. It made a basement in here. It used to be three piers, and it's a room out the back. Now they've been closed, and they made it the basement bigger because that can.
It wasn't enclosed in the back, it was open.
Well, that was one of our other questions. When you purchased the home, what was the square footage of the home?
It's not exactly.
On the plans, it shows the pre-existing and the proposed.
Well, we have the assessors.
If you look at the town assessors.
Yeah, it's right here.
The, they show a footprint of the existing structure of 2,291 square feet.
No?
No. Which is before any work was done. So that comes at 12.25 percent of the lot.
But she has no idea when they added, right?
Well, they would need to add, they would almost need to double that, the size of the footprint, to get to the 30 percent maximum.
No, I'm talking about the septic system.
Well, under the table of allowed use, you have a minimum green space.
No, I was talking about the septic.
So to get to that, you'd have to.
Oh, I see you're saying the 12 percent, yeah, right.
If she's adding extra footage, though, she's also using the size that's qualifying for septic system.
Now, you dealt with Mr. Brookings. Have you dealt with the local Board of Health?
That's him, right?
No.
We talked.
He's Nishoba.
I've only spoken with Bill Brookings because he's, he's the one that signed off on the Title V, because I asked him everything before I went ahead and thought of doing five bedrooms.
You don't know, but we would need to know what the existing square footage was and what the total square footage will be after you do or can do what you're looking to do.
Well, like you said, the footprint, the only change is going to be is the adding.
Well, you're adding a third floor, okay.
All right, that's all. It's all the same?
We talked the footprint. Okay, we're talking about the square footage inside of the house. I mean, and it's something we can't guess at, we need to. Now, this came up as an issue because, did you apply for a permit for renovation or something?
Yes, we had the other inspector, Joe, who was here.
Okay. And so you've got a permit to do what you're doing now?
We got a permit too. When I came in, when we first purchased the home, and we asked Joe that we wanted to redo the kitchen and the bathroom. Well, we went in there and we started, we broke the wall. It was infested with mice. So we have kids with allergies, and he wanted to take everything out. So we started taking everything out. The inspector came, we put concrete floors downstairs, we removed the dirt. Before we put the concrete floors, Joe came over and said, okay, looks good, you guys can pour. He came upstairs, he saw that we were ripping the walls down, he says, okay, everything looks good, just let me know. This house is going to look beautiful. I can see you guys have everything on plans, looks great. Go for it, go for it. But, like I said, it's a, it's, it was verbal. I shouldn't have had it written on paper.
At that point, did you have a third floor?
No.
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 So the only permit you pulled then was for kitchen and bathroom renovation?
And then when we wanted to put the gable, I call it the gable roof, we wanted to change the, the stoop. So you came over and talked to Joe. Joe said that we had to come in front of the board because we didn't have 50 feet from the street. You came over here, you talked to him, you told him, no, you're going to have to go in front of the board. He said, oh, okay, okay, I'll do that. How long is that going to take? He said, maybe 30 days, something like that. And he said, you know what? You guys, go ahead, you guys can do it. So it was all verbal with Joe.
This was with the former building, isn't it?
Yes, Joe.
And then you met our current acting building, isn't it?
That's when we, when we met Mr. Hanks is when we started putting the footing for the extension in the back.
And how did you happen to meet him?
Because every time you touch any concrete or put core concrete, you have to call the inspector.
To the school and review everything, make sure everything by, you know, by the book, and he was there, and he saw what I was done, and he's approved, and we keep it moving for that time.
I, it, it just occurs to me that if I was told I had to get a building permit to renovate the kitchen and the bathroom, which was the original one, that if I was going to make some additions or pour some concrete, that maybe I'd need.
More permits.
More permits. More permits.
Well, let's, let's put it this way, I, I'm gonna speak out, okay? When I move over here, I call myself as a black man, okay? And I jump in, start asking favors, you know, to do the best in the house. And I think Joe was looking to me like, "Oh, this guy's not gonna do it, whatever he's saying." But I was serious to doing what I'm doing right now, and I started saying, "Joe, I'm gonna do it this, because I do it concrete, so I'm gonna remove everything out of the basement, I'm gonna make this nice I can, and I'm gonna do it." Okay? And he's always was treating me like, "You're doing a good job." Okay? And-
But, we should have had it on paper.
Yes, should have had it on papers, was verbal, and the guy is, this guy's now is work, workover, he was, has been having a house, so everything we've been doing, and he was like, "Good job," but I don't know what happened.
He did say that we have to come and do permits. And I started doing all the permits-
Who said you had to come and do-
Mr. Hanks.
Yes, and then-
Started doing everything online, that's when I spoke with the Board of Health about the septic tank, that's, he told me to go to Worcester, do this, I was doing everything down the road. Then, then he sent me the letter saying that I had to come and have the meeting here, so.
So, well, I was like, you know, and I, I'm not trying to blame anybody else, I blame myself too, but everybody saw whatever I was doing in the house, okay? And I removed the roof to put the-
The addition.
The addition on top, the second floor. And right away, you know, he stopped me, and I say, "Okay, you're gonna stop me, right, but, you know, if I don't cover this, I'm gonna have rainwater on, inside my house." He say, "You know, I could just close the roof, but don't put no shingle, nothing over there, so you go in front of the border." I say, "Okay." And I just, first house, you know, doing my best to improve the house. You know, make it look good now only for us, for the town to, and that's what happened.
Who owns the adjacent lots? Do, is, is it just this one lot that you own?
No, I own, I think that's on the left, yeah.
Twenty-two. Now, you still own twenty-two? I don't, I'm sixty-two.
I'm sixty-two also.
So, because, is it all in the same name?
Yes.
Is there a way to carve out a two-acre piece of land in there for your house?
And then you carve out that, pick it up and put it somewhere else?
No, 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 I'm saying, how much total land area do you have?
The total's, I think it's three-point-nine acres, total.
The whole thing?
What I'm saying is, you would not be pre-existing non-conforming if the lot were eighty-thousand square feet and met the side yard. Do you know what I'm saying?
I think you can meet the side yard on one, on the one side, anyway.
Yeah, over there, I understand, but I mean, it would everywhere else, and it would be-
Yeah, she could go to the planning board and request that lots forty-one, forty-two, and twenty-two all be combined into one singular lot. But it'd still be non-conforming to the, the front yard and the side yard.
Also, you can pick up, you pick up another twenty feet here, and you pick up more front of here, if this was all one, one lot. See what I'm saying?
It's, 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 I think, four deeds, but it's on one, something like that?
Say it again?
I think it, it's, it has deeds.
Own, yes.
Deeds for each of the lots? You get separate tax bills, correct?
Yes.
For each of the lots?
Yes.
This is what I'm saying, the one lot that you have, the dwelling, which happens to be a two-family dwelling. Oftentimes, the planning board will say, "You need to combine the lots in order to do what you wanna do." Or take land from one lot and add it on to the other one to make the lot larger. I mean, in Berlin now, we require eighty-thousand square feet to build a single family, and you've got a two-family, okay? And a lot of the non-conforming aspects would be diminished if some land were taken from another lot, does that make sense? What, what are your plans, I mean, are we, would that interfere with some plans you have for the property?
No, I gotta be honest, we're not focused on anything in the, in the whole thing. We just want to finish the house, that's the most important thing. The, the lot is very, you know-
We're still cleaning.
We still clean, it's a lot of spending money, you know, to make that nice, you know? So, the goal is to finish the house, we're not thinking about to do anything in the land not yet.
Well, my question is still there though because of the, yeah.
Let me, let me go try this. Okay, this is lot four-one. If you take some of this property here and combine it with this property, you get more square footers.
Got you.
All right? That way, this lot would be bigger.
Okay.
So, but explain to me, when I do this, what is gonna change?
Yes.
About money, about tax, everything?
Well, you'll have to go to the planning board to figure this one out, but you would be getting more area for this lot, okay?
You would be more conforming?
More conforming, I don't understand, yeah, but, okay.
But, he's got a point, so how does that go with us, with the taxes?
Yes.
Because everything's separate.
Because everything's separate right now, you know, we-
This is where you gotta go to the planning board.
And they will tell you.
They'll tell you what you can do.
And you, in essence, you may-
Instead of having three separate lots, you would have one, and maybe a half of this, or whatever they say, then you'd have this little pie here and this little pie here.
Yeah, but, let's, let's forget about this right now.
Or imagine that I just-
So if we don't add, add it to, if we don't take part of our land on this side, are we still okay or no?
I don't know, it's gonna come down to determination by us and the Board of Health as to whether or not adding substance to this house that's on this very small lot for Berlin standards is more detrimental to the neighborhood. And the Board of Health has to say whether or not it's realistic, okay? Many times, they've had folks change the configuration in order to make it more realistic. I mean, it might be if you ever wanted to sell a piece of that land, okay? That it would make sense that you would want a larger lot for yourself where your house is. Do you know what I mean? So that you could do more with the house. Okay, I see right now, there's two outstanding issues, and one is our local Board of Health, and number two is getting figures on what the existing square foot of the house is and what the square footage is going to be, okay? For a two-family that's on a very substandard lot. Do my board members have any other questions?
Well, there's an issue with conservation as well, isn't there?
Yes. Have you been to conservation?
That was one of the checkmarks on the, for the permits, and I spoke with Caroline, I think I said her name right, and she sent me to Dave Burke's, Dave Burke?
Yeah.
He came out and he's doing the-
Wagging.
The elination, elination.
Delination. I'll wear the wetlands.
Correct.
Okay.
And he was there about three weeks ago, and-
That's it.
He saw, he, he told us as was everything, you know, okay.
You haven't gotten anything back from him since then?
Yeah, no, he's-
He was waiting to see what was happening to that.
Well, part of what we do may depend upon what he says.
Oh, okay.
Well, for that time, he was over there in my house, walked over there in the back, checked everything.
He did his best.
He did his best and say, you know, for me, if everything's okay over here, you guys still stand on the lot, and that's it.
I don't know what that means.
Me too, he just said, "You stand in the good," that's it, he told me like that.
He said he was gonna get some paperwork together and, and hand it over to Caroline.
Okay, you haven't got anything yet?
No.
No. So, that's number three is the wetlands. Does anybody else at the table have a question?
No, because we're gonna need the conservation and the Board of Health.
The well, which well are you using on the property?
The, inside the house.
Okay, that should probably be changed, because that's gonna be looking close to the-
Septic.
Say, listen, I-
That was already there.
That's, that's my, 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 my question is this, I don't try to make any confrontation for anybody else.
Could I just make sure I understand, because I'm taking notes here? The well is inside the house?
Yes, inside.
The well is in the garage.
In the garage.
In the garage.
In the garage. The picture's right there, the first one you showed.
So the wellhead itself is in the garage?
So, before, before we sign any papers, we check with the town if it was okay to purchase the house, and was everything approved from the town? So now, if I have to change anything, it sounds like I made a, the wrong move. Because if it's not, the town approved, you know, make sure I-
Well, I don't think the town approved, I think that you had it in home inspection, right? And the home inspector said it was okay.
Right.
Your house is-
That doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, the home inspection is a separate thing from the town saying, "Okay." Do you know what I mean? It wasn't a town officer that went and did your home inspection, it was a private company that did the home inspection and said, "This is okay, this is okay, this is okay." It wasn't our Board of Health or our building commissioner that said, "Yeah, it's okay." Okay, so, anyone else have something, other than the three issues that I see? And that's the Board of Health, it's the Conservation Commission, and determination of the wetlands, and again, with the Board of Health, it's, it's the septic and the well.
I just got off the phone with Bill Brookings. This is supposed to be a four-bedroom deed restriction, not five, based on the Title V report. You managed to get a five-bedroom deed restriction, which is inaccurate. And one of the other things the Board of Health has to know, is this gonna be a single family, or is it gonna be a multi-family? Well, we don't, we don't have enough information in our hands to take proper action right now.
Right, that's what he said to me, he said I could, okay.
Could I just ask, the papers you have in your hands-
Mm-hmm.
Say five-bedroom.
That's-
Where did they come from?
I believe when you went into the-
The registry.
Registered deeds.
Yeah.
And told them five.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, it's not signed off by Brookings.
No.
He told me to go, it's eleven bedrooms, so eleven bedrooms considers five-
Eleven, eleven rooms.
Room, sorry, consider five, so you have to go to the deed, and I have to do this five-bedroom thing, and send it to me by fax.
I think the problem is-
There's some, excuse me, there's some language here that I, I find a little bit confusing, so, because it says a Title V bedroom deed restriction. Title V is the name of a lot, it's not the number of bedrooms that you're supposed to have.
Correct me on this, but it, just to clarify, we had an eleven-room house, which by default becomes a five-bedroom. I believe the reason for putting a four-bedroom deed restriction on that is so that should you decide to sell, the next person doesn't come in and say, "I have a five-bedroom house." You have a four-bedroom, it's limited by the deed restriction to comply with, the septic system is there.
I'm sorry, a, a four-bedroom, and the septic are, they're fine, but as soon as you start adding more bedrooms, that can kick up the, the, the need to increase the size of your septic system.
So, so putting a five-bedroom deed restriction on it doesn't do anything?
Right, you just can't sell it for six bedrooms or whatever.
Well, but, you still don't have a legal septic system for a five-bedroom, so, that's why they wanted the four-bedroom.
That's, that's my issue with Bill, we were talking, and he says he doesn't have enough paperwork on, on this house to tell me that it's not.
Well, we've, uh-
That's what he told me on the phone.
Right, I don't know how many years we've never granted a five, or asked for a five-bedroom deed restriction. Four is always the max that we go to, nature of the soil and so forth in this town, makes anything in excess of that quite a bit challenging and maybe not possible.
Do you have any, or would the Board of Health have any issue with the fact that the wellhead is in the garage? Does it matter where it is?
If it's got a safety cap on it, that shouldn't matter, because I believe the autism center, there's a well inside the building there, at least it was originally.
When do you next meet?
Tues, this coming Tuesday.
So it would be possible for them to get on your agenda?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And I want, Bill's gonna be in tomorrow morning, and I'll go over some things with him, and if we have any questions, we'll get all of you folks to try and sort it out.
Okay. Then we'll leave this in your gracious hands.
Wonderful.
To come back to us. Okay, Conservation Commission, do we know when they meet again, Leanne?
Next Wednesday.
Voice in the back, is she?
Okay, our conservation is meeting a week from tonight.
So that's, next Wednesday.
Right. Okay, there is a possibility there won't be a forum, because three of our members are away, and a fourth might be away also.
But you could maybe meet the following week or whatever like that, right?
It would be a special meeting, but we could.
You could meet before our next meeting.
Your next meeting is?
October ninth.
October what?
October ninth.
Nine, okay, yeah, we would meet the first Wednesday in October.
And we would meet on the second, okay, Wednesday. But I think that deline, we need some kind of delineation of the wetlands as it occurs to the house. When does, anybody from the planning board here? Okay, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I think the planning board should take a look at the, the proposal, because in the past, sometimes they've said, "Well, you need to carve out this, or do that," or whatever, because the property's in the same name, okay? So, I don't know when they meet, Leanne, do you?
I don't know, it's Tuesday.
They met last night.
Oh, that's right, so they meet every two weeks, don't they?
Yeah.
And I, can I ask a favor for you guys over there? You know, it's been hectic, you know, to get the house done. Like I say, I have the roof on top, and I have the tarp, you know?
The tarp on top of the roof.
Okay? And I have my family inside the house, okay?
In the apartment.
In the apartment, and when it's raining, so, you know, top, want to go inside the house. I know this is not you guys' problem, that's my problem, okay? But I think, in a good way, see you guys can help us, okay? I'm not trying to-
Well, in what way, if you're saying, can we just tell you, "Go ahead and do what you're doing, we can't do that"?
No, 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 it's not about this.
But, what my suggestion would be is for you to go to the building inspector and say, "Look, they're not ready to make a-" they're not ready to make a decision yet. Can I do thus and so?" It is, the zoning officer is the one that makes these decisions. We can't tell you, "Go ahead and put a roof on" or...
No, 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 I'm not saying to you guys to do that.
The zoning officer is the inspector? Yes?
The building inspector and the zoning commissioner are the same person.
I'm just saying because he said, he told ours to come over here with this meeting to see, you know...
Well, I think you're trying to do the right thing and I think he may be impressed by the fact that you're trying to do the right thing, okay? But what you do about the roof is up to you in the interim. I don't think, and again, folks speak up, but I don't think this board could move forward with that, with this, without planning board reviewing it, without the Board of Health getting involved as far as, "Is the wellhead okay?" I mean, he's saying, you know, if you have a safety cap or what, we don't do that piece of it. We don't, but it's up to us to make sure that it's safe, okay? And as far as the, we need the difference in the area. What was, when you purchased it, I'm sure. The other thing you might wanna do is when you had, you had Title V done, right? Do you have a copy of that Title V?
I just gave it to him, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, do we, okay. Does it say anything about the number of... But see, all of these things have to come together.
No, this is all we have.
Yeah.
Hand sketch, it doesn't, doesn't say whether it's good for...
Right.
It's just another page.
Inspection form. But like I said, when I spoke to Bill, he said there's not enough information on this house. There's no information, there's none, it's second guessing.
Right, so he was being kind saying four bedrooms because he could say, you know, maybe you need to have the system looked at all over again. You need to come back and tell us, I think, what did they say? With 11 rooms, that they automatically assume it's a five-bedroom, right? So...
That's the only reason I went there, because he gave me that information to go and do this.
I think you're a little confused about the information that he gave you. He did not give you permission for five bedrooms, okay? I don't think, all right, but we'll find out, okay? Because we're not trying to hurt you in any way. We're trying to safeguard what you're doing for you and others, okay? And you don't want us to give you a permit to do something and then over this side, the Conservation Commission says, "Hey, hold on, you can't do that. You should have put it over here," okay? So you need, it's in your best interest, I think, I mean, I don't know if you do.
Well, that's what we're trying to do too, we're trying to do the right thing.
Absolutely, and that's why I'm saying, let's get all of the, within the next month, you could have all of the information you need. If you're proactive and you can, you can make sure the conservation sees them before our next meeting. I mean, even if you don't.
Right.
Okay? And we're gonna have the Board of Health...
The gentleman that's doing the donation is from Berlin, so he's local. He said, "Whatever you need, I can handle for you and I know Caroline." So if we can get that done as soon as possible, yes.
Right, but the Board, the Conservation Commission has to tell you. First of all, they need to delineate where the wetlands is. And then they need to tell you what, if anything, you need to do, okay? To protect the wetlands, if that makes sense. Am I misspeaking?
No.
So they get the wetlands delineated.
Okay, so they're not delineated yet, or they are?
Did you put the question?
Yeah, he was there and he did everything.
And he set the flags out?
That's, gotta be honest, he told me, he just told me what I saw over here, you guys still...
Okay.
And the law, that's all he told me and I, can I give him any information? It was my own mouth.
Make sure we check.
That would be great if you could do that to help them out and to help us out. See that conservation, within the next month. And you may need to put flags out, you know, he may need to put the flags out.
Yeah.
And when they delineate, they typically put the flags out.
Yeah, that's what they said he will.
It's awful wet back there.
Well, when we walked over there, it was just walk.
There was no water?
No, there was no water.
Sometimes it's not even the water, it may be by the plants that are there.
Yeah. Right.
It'd be a frog.
Salamander.
Yeah. No frogs, they're all in the pool.
Okay, so we talked about getting the Board of Health and you're gonna meet with them, right?
Yes.
Right?
He's gone, he left.
Oh, he left, okay.
But he said tomorrow, Bill is here, so I'll pop in tomorrow.
Right, but I'm trying to tell you, you need to meet with the Berlin Board of Health.
Just Bill.
It's not Bill?
He's just show, okay, and they rely on him for lots of things. But we have to listen to what the Berlin Board of Health says, okay? So you wanna make their meeting, and I think we said it's what, Tuesday or something?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. So what you wanna do is you wanna get on their agenda for next Tuesday, okay? And then next Wednesday, that's you guys.
Right.
You may and may not be able to help them at that point.
Right.
But you can help them make sure they get it flagged and that you get...
Right.
The information that your board will need to make a determination. The other folks, and they meet in a couple of weeks, is the planning board, okay? I don't know how my colleagues feel, but oftentimes they will say, you know, "You really ought to do this to make that lot more conforming. So let's, let's see what the planning board says." And what you would get from each of them, and again, I think you've learned, is some kind of a letter. All right? And, you know, we have no objection to what you do. We request that you do this. Whatever it happens to be, that would be your ultimate goal from each of the folks. Okay, anybody else on the board, I've been tracking myself silly here?
The only question I have is there's a lot of people in the audience, I don't know if they're for or against this or have any thought.
Well, I was gonna give the board a chance and then open it up, okay? So no one on the board seems to have any further questions? Anybody in the audience, in the butter or anything, pro or con or, yes?
I haven't, at this point, neither pro or con, but I think having either the person who did the drawings or the person who is the contractor be here to answer all those questions about square footage and all those changes, the heights and everything else. Because it doesn't seem that these people know how to answer your questions, but hopefully the builder, you're not building yourself, right?
No.
Yeah, the builder would know the answer to these questions.
No, hold on, I...
He's the builder.
I am the builder.
You are the builder?
Yes.
Maybe your designer should be here.
I'm sorry?
I was, listen, I...
The person who did the drawings should be here to give you your square foot questions.
This is the big...
Something Hernandez.
Yes. I think one of our main concerns is the change in the footprint and the change in the gross floor area of the, of the house, okay? I think unless my colleagues disagree, rather than going to the expense of asking them to come here, if you could get an email or letter from them stating what the situation is. So as long as you understand exactly what we're asking, we're asking for the change in square footage, okay?
The existing and the proposed.
What was existing before you did anything, when you purchased the property?
Okay.
And what it will be if in fact you do what is on those plans.
And when you say square footage, you're saying around and up?
Well, if you, yeah, okay, I mean... If you're gonna live on the third floor, that's, you know, part of the square footage, okay?
And the wall that you would put in was not considered, just the top floor was considered square footage. Now the basement is considered square footage.
I hate also too, I understand that you're doing a lot of things here, but to avoid the expense, is there a possibility that we can get this like a week or so ahead of time in case it's still not understood?
The sooner you can get it to the board...
So we can review it?
And Leanne can get it out to us and then if there's questions outstanding or if we... But the two things about the engineer that did the drawings, one is the square footage and one is the footprint, okay? The footprint of the building.
Yeah.
How much area it covers.
And one we can't see that way.
Yeah, okay. I think the questions have been answered by the board. Yes, sir?
I do have a question, are the plans stamped by an engineer?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Are the plans stamped by an engineer?
Yes. You're more than welcome to go look at them.
No, no, it's fine, just...
I don't think they actually, they're not stamped.
I would be surprised if they are, to be honest with you.
They're not stamped.
Yeah, they're not, they should be.
We were supposed to...
Okay, not yet, not yet.
Oh, that's an interesting twist.
Something.
Well, I'm gonna put this way because I remember when we talked to Spector, he say, "You're only gonna stamp the blueprint, finish..."
At the final.
The final, then that's, that's what's saying, that's why it's not...
Well, that infers to me that there might be flexibility in what you're gonna ultimately do.
Yes.
What I'm telling you is what you present to us is all you're gonna be able to do. So if you're holding off on the stamp, okay? I might hold off on the stamp until I hear from Conservation and I hear from Board of Health. Because Board of Health may tell you, "Four bedrooms, that's it," okay? Conservation may tell you, "We want you to move this or do that," or you have, you know what I mean? So it may well be that you don't want it stamped until after you meet with these boards. But we need some kind of a signed plan in order to authorize it because it will be final when we sign it. It won't be like, "Oh gee, well, we decided to move the house over here." I don't think they're gonna move it anyway, you're right. Okay, anyone else in the audience wish to ask a question, make a statement? Do we have neighbors here that are pro or con? I mean, it's fine to say, you think it's a great idea or it's fine to say...
I think it's a great idea, I live a couple houses down.
Could I trouble you to mention, to say your name?
Matt Mariko, 700. I think they're doing a great job, they have proven the law from what it was from the previous owner. Sounds like they got plans for the greenhouses, either ripping them down, cleaning up the yard. It's looking good.
You're happy to see that?
I'm happy, yeah.
Anyone else wanna try to...
I step and slip 11 Oak Street. My wife is here, we're both tickled, think that somebody's there. You know, the last thing we'd like to see is that lot become a lot like where I used to work at Holman's. You know, unable to be touched by anybody. You know, I really am happy that it's looking great. I mean, the rock work he's done has been phenomenal. Looks like a federal building if you stand in this lower driveway, it's beautiful.
Good advertisement for his business, though. We'll say very nice job.
In case, your neighbors are very helpful. Because one of the things we have to determine when we make a decision on this is whether or not it's more detrimental to the neighborhood. And there is nothing quite like the neighbors knowing what's more detrimental to the neighborhood. Anyone else?
I'll speak up, Ryan Gilfoyle will be immediately neighbor of the property.
What's your street address?
20 Oak. Yeah, from, right from the beginning, you could see they're invested. They've brought out a lot of trash and rubble from the old greenhouse space and there's still a lot of work to be done, but they've been tirelessly working up until they ran into the, you know, the obstruction here with the permits. And I know I honestly believe they're, you know, it's just kind of a case of being new, being a little ignorant to how things are supposed to go, but that they're working very hard and trying to get back on track and do what's required.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I don't know if I can speak because I'm not the homeowner, but I do live across the street in the rental property.
I, you're a neighbor?
I'm right across the street, I can see the thing going up. And a lot of people have objected to the height, but I don't see it's a problem, you get used to it. And I know that they're tirelessly working on it and it's a big improvement.
And did you give your name?
Barbara McKinnon, 27 Oak Street. And I have been in and I have seen what they're doing and it's, it's beautiful. They really are doing a lovely job and really trying to improve the area. The house looks, it's great.
Okay, let's get our ducks in a row. It would be wise for you to request that we continue the hearing until next month and so we can have sufficient, you have sufficient time to get your bundle together. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, you'll have the majority of it and then Leanne can share it with us. We can't discuss it, but we can each individually look at it.
But nothing have you done until you guys decide?
That is totally up to the building inspector. And if you, if you want to accost the building inspector and say, "I wanna do this to preserve the properties so that, from damage," then that's totally up to the building commissioner whether or not he says, "Yes, do this." Okay, I would entertain a motion, we continue this hearing. Do we have the Capes of Berlin in October, is that at seven o'clock? Okay, do you wanna continue this till eight o'clock on the ninth? Is that a good idea if someone wants to make a motion?
I'd move that we continue this hearing until October...
At the request of the petitioners.
Requested the petitioner to October 11.
Tain the information needed. Is there a second? At eight o'clock? So I can...
Is it the 11th or the 9th?
The 9th.
The 9th?
The 9th.
Sorry.
We're shooting for Christmas in the house, like we're...
It's coming.
Well, whenever, whenever you're making things better, I think it's very helpful. And I think your neighbors are showing you support and that's a wonderful thing.
Can I just make a quick comment here?
Yes.
Just for the petitioners here, I've been on this board now for, I don't know, three or four years. And I think as a board, we do a pretty good job of bending over backwards to try to accommodate requests for variances and permits. And I understand all this is very frustrating and it's a lot of work. And we're asking all these questions and we want all this paperwork because if we do issue a permit, it's a legal document. It's just like a judge issuing a court decision. And if we do something wrong, anyone in town can show up and appeal that decision. And then this whole thing starts all over again. So from my perspective, I would much rather inconvenience you than have us do something wrong. And, you know, if, if it's wrong and somebody appeals it, the whole process gets set back by like six months. I'd rather not have you go through that. So I understand this is frustrating and you wanna kind of get on with it. But bear with us, we're trying to do the right thing and make sure that you don't get that six-month setback. We wanna be able, if we're gonna agree to grant a permit, and I can't tell you whether we will or won't at this point, but if we're gonna agree to do that, we wanna make sure we're doing it right. We don't want to have somebody come back and say, "This information and this permit is wrong" and have it thrown out and then have to start nothing all over again. So I understand it's frustrating, please bear with us, we're trying to do it right.
Yeah, and there's two ways, after we even give a decision, if it is a positive decision. After we even give a decision, and if it is a positive decision, it has to go to the town clerk and there's 20 days, anybody can appeal it. But in addition to that, what we're trying to do in asking the Board of Health and everything, we're looking for them to give consent so that we don't give you a permit. And then the Conservation Commission says, "Yeah, but you gotta do this." Okay? And now you're stopped in your tracks again. So if we can get everybody rowing in the same boat, and obviously your neighbors, I think this is the strongest neighborhood showing I've seen in quite a while and they seem to be in support of what you're doing. So the other thing that was mentioned to me is, there was some question as to the height of the building, okay? When you go to your engineer-
Well, when I got the plans, I brought them to Mr. Hanks. I put them on the table. I told him three floors. Are we gonna have a problem? He said, "No, you're in, you're in the whatever."
When you go to the engineer and ask him for your square footage and for your footing, okay, that you're covering. The third thing you wanna ask him in the note that he's gonna give you, either in the form of an email or a letter, is that the height at the tip of the building, because that's something else that could be questioned if it's over 35 feet. It's not that you can't deal with it, all right? But it's that somebody could turn around and say, "No, you can't." Like the fire department, okay? Because they need certain height in order to be able to deal with any structure issue. So you can get those three answers. My suggestion to you would be if the answer comes back that it's 36 feet, that you might wanna go and talk to the fire chief and say, you know, "Can you live with this?" Okay, any, we have a motion, we have a second on the table, do we not?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this? Do you have any question of us as to what we've asked you to do? Okay?
Sorry that I was not prepared.
Thirty-five feet.
It's thirty-eight, thirty-eight something, what we thought.
Oh.
Thirty-eight point four. It's very hard to read though, very, very difficult.
Okay. I want you to talk to the building inspector. And I want you to tell him that you're going to, what did you say, thirty-eight what?
Thirty-eight point four. But it's very hard to read.
I can't remember now if that was at the peak or just to the top of the wall.
That was the top of the wall. All right, back to the-
Online, you're gonna find one of these. Okay? This is the Berlin zoning bylaw. Okay? You can view it online. And I will tell you in this, why they keep the old copy of all, I do know why, but. This is the 2018 version, so there might be four or five versions out there. You can use the 2018 version. And on page 55, there are the dimensions, okay? Building height in feet is 35 feet. You may get done with this whole process. The building inspector may look at the plans and say, "You need a variance" from the height. Okay? Even though you're pre-existing non-conforming. So I go have a little chat with the building inspector about the height. If you're 38.5, it wouldn't take much to make it 35, would it? Because you're talking about attic space, right? So I'm just suggesting. That was a good call, Ginny.
It was thirty-eight four to the peak.
Yeah, it is the peak. To the peak, yeah.
So-
But the peak is attic, like you said.
Right, then, so you gotta come down to-
Thirty-five. There is no allowance for a building over 35 feet without a variance. There would have to be a very significant reason to change that 35 feet. Okay? So we all learned something. Thank you, Ginny. See, this could be that you could get the permit for the special, and we may have a new building inspector by the time next month goes around. And he could say-
I could have four.
He could say to you, "Oh no, you can't do this because it's over 35 feet. Now you need a variance. Go back to the ZB A and get a variance." So the easiest thing to do, that would require another hearing. So the easiest thing to do would be if you can find like around 3 feet, okay? You might save yourself some grief.
I couldn't have to measure because what's on paper is one thing. When wood and nails go, it doesn't always match.
Talk to the building inspector.
You're gonna measure that for me, hold it.
Okay. Because you can measure with a tape measure and he can measure with a tape measure. And they may be two different distances. He may turn around and say, "Oh no, the very peak is just an air outlet or something." I doubt it. I think it's, but you don't know, okay? And perhaps dealing emails so that you have something in your hand. Because wouldn't it be terrible to go through all of this and all the departments? And then you go to build it and they say, "Sorry, it's over 35 feet." Okay, is there anything else, folks? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed? I'll take that as you're animus vote. We'll see you next month at eight o'clock. You have your work cut out for you. I think I'd look at that 35 feet first. And then if you find out you're going back to the architect or engineer or whatever, maybe he could change a couple of drawings, flatten the roof out a little bit so that it's under the 35. Thank you for approving the amendment. Okay, you're all welcome to stay while we do mundane stuff.
Everybody wants a paper Monday? They either make- It's all right, I get them, I get them. You been good?
Oh, there it is. Do we require them to, they're allowed to cut down like old growth and stuff? Or is there, this is all before, we're curious for future ones. Do they need to clear cut everything?
As I remember, they need to clear cut it, okay? Where the array is going to be.
Sure. But then the buffer between the road, we can't require like to retain all those trees?
We did.
We did do that.
Did they strip that too? I haven't been up there. So they cut everything right down to the road? They cut the buffer zone?
Yes.
Yeah, they did.
For-
I don't know what was there prior, but I know when you drive by, it's pretty clear.
So he didn't preserve anything?
Correct. As you can see, and I can, and I was there, I don't know, the other day. And they put up some acrobites and so forth.
So that's what everybody's unhappy about is that they clear cut the buffer zone.
Yes.
That's correct.
So I don't know, was there the old maple and oak trees and that type?
Normally they can don't allow it.
There was not, there was, in that, what would be the buffer zone was an old stone wall and some, you know, crappy-
Well, to be quite, quite honest, they probably prefer to have the acrobites there.
They don't want the covered-
They don't want the deciduous trees. Because they're gonna be putting leaves all over the place.
He was kinda, I'll just get the light back on. Oh. It was kind of-
Well, we made the decision.
Yeah, but even when we were talking, he was real squirrely about, didn't want trees shading his little panels and dah, 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 dah. So there may have been some little more taken than he should have taken.
Right.
And we asked for higher ones and he went wah, wah, I don't know the cost of that.
Well, again, the neighbors can go to the building inspector and say-
Pull the site plan.
Yes, go take a look, go to the town clerk or to Leanne and say, "Can I take a look at the site plan for?"
Because it was all listed on there.
So, okay, it's all listed on there as to what hap- And the decision requires buffers too. Because we added one out front.
Yeah, we did, combined.
And then they can go to the building inspector and say, "They're not adhering to the decision."
So they cut all the way down to West Street?
No.
No.
Not West Street.
There's a buffer zone to West Street, but as you come up Randall, it's like clear cut up and then they went in and clear cut the whole areas. So now the top of the hill, the back towards the center of town and West Street is vegetation, old growth. And then down, as you're going down the hill, on the backside of where the panels are gonna go, is all old growth. And then down at the bottom is all growth. And he, there was some crap down in there and they've cleaned it all up and they've started to put more back in. But they gotta put more back in and book bigger stuff.
Well, path of least resistance.
Well, part of that was between the solar array and West Street. Part of that in there is wetlands. But part of it was also gonna be their retention pond more towards Randall Road.
There was always a little pool.
And then there was like a 40-foot section from where that chain link fence was going up. Between that chain link fence and West Street, there was like a 40-foot section where they were gonna cut so that the trees that were there were not shading the solar panels at the base of the hill.
Yeah.
So they were gonna, there's some area that's cut that's outside of the fenced-in area. But it certainly shouldn't have cut all the way to West Street.
No, it haven't.
They have not, no. They have not.
I think there were-
And they, there was an area that had nothing currently by where the house is.
Yeah.
Yes.
That we even made them push up in there.
Correct.
So that you wouldn't see the array from the street.
They have, they've done some of that up by the house. It hasn't continued down the street. Yeah.
But if there's someone who's aggrieved, you know, that's what they do. They go look at the plan and they say, "There's supposed to be trees here." And then the building inspector may turn around and say, "Well, they're gonna do it as soon as whatever," and I'll see that they do it. Or he'll say, "You're right and you, me and my gun will go get them." Okay, anything else, guys? How about a motion to adjourn?
I'm suited.
Suitable, second.
All those in favor, right? All those opposed? Sue didn't stay, don't-